You can tell me.
They're here. Mom was lost. She tried to get in that door back there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was I ignoring you?
I saw you were trying.
It is 7:02. We have returned from executive session and ready to begin the public session of our meeting. If we could please call the roll.
Ms. Jordan, here. Mr. Spicer.
Here.
Dr. Collins.
Here.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Ryder.
Here.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
Here.
Ms. Corzonz.
Here.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Mr. Lamb.
Here.
And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a few actions coming out of executive session. I will be looking for motions on four resolutions. The first is BoE 36. Be it resolved that the Board hereby appoints Jeffrey M. Sheljack Esquire as the Hearing Officer pursuant to Section 75 of the New York State Civil Service Law with respect to employee number 3216, and authorize authorizes the Hearing Officer to hear evidence, make a transcript of proceedings, and to issue a written report of his findings of fact and recommendations, including a disciplinary penalty, if any.
Second.
All in favor of this resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? BoE 36 passes. BoE 37. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby suspends employee number 3216 without pay commencing February 6, 2025, for the maximum period permitted by the New York State Civil Service Law during the months of the employee's paid work year and then with pay during the pendency of these proceedings, if during a time when the employee would otherwise be paid.
Second.
All in favor of BoE 37?
Aye.
Any opposed? BoE 37 has passed. BoE...
Yes, that is correct.
39. We were jumping from 30...
Yeah, 38 is 39.
Okay. BoE 39. Be it resolved that the Board hereby appoints David N. Stein Esquire as the Hearing Officer pursuant to Section 75 of the New York State Civil Service Law with respect to employee number 5358, and authorizes the Hearing Officer to hear evidence, make a transcript of proceedings, and to issue a written report of his findings of fact and recommendations, including a disciplinary penalty, if any.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of BoE 39?
Aye.
Any opposed? And BoE 40. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby suspend employee number 5358 without pay commencing February 6, 2025, for the maximum period permitted by the New York State Civil Service Law during the months of the employee's paid work year and then with pay during the pendency of these proceedings, if during a time when the employee would otherwise be paid. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So all four resolutions have passed. Dr. Padalino, I think, would like to make a comment.
It's just before we do our student recognition, which I see our student is here, but just before we do, I do want to make a quick statement. As I stated in my message I sent out last week, I want to assure our community that Kingston City School District will protect all of our students regardless of ethnicity, disability, race, ethnicity, gender identity, or immigration status. We are here to protect all of our students. Our current policies and procedures ensure this, and changes in federal policy don't move us from our position, whether it's programmatically or the safety of our students and our students' rights. We've never allowed access to our students or their personal identifying information without a subpoena or parental permission, a judicial subpoena or parental permission. Governments and security guards have been given explicit reminders of our policies and our practices and instructions on how to follow them. In fact, there really is not much change from what we do day to day here in the Kingston City School District and what we always will do in the Kingston City School District. So I want to reiterate that the safety of all our students is our priority. No local, state, or federal enforcement will be granted unlawful entry or access to our students in the Kingston City School District. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to our student recognition. Who is...is there someone speaking?
I'm going to speak. We'll introduce...so our student recognition is Daniela Johnson. She's a KHS senior. Daniela, that's what's called a...she's a weight thrower, which I think for older people who have done this, it's shot put. And they only call her a weight thrower. She threw a record 49 feet, nine and three-quarter inches. She's the first KHS female athlete to qualify for the historic Millrose Games tomorrow. Tomorrow in New York City. Intertime at KHS, Daniela has been part of TSTT, PBIS ambassadors, orchestra, chamber orchestra, and a varsity member of indoor and outdoor track team. And she'll be going to Rider University in August to study business. And will of course be participating in their tracking.
Where's Mom? Mom's here, right? Come on, Mom.
She's all in. Hey, Mom!
She also used to play varsity basketball.
No, not at all. Now you can go.
Congratulations, Daniela.
Thank you.
Good luck tomorrow.
I have a Tulsa City now accident.
That brings us to public comment. Do we have anyone who would like to address the Board? Seeing none, hearing none, we will move on to the approval of minutes. First, we will do the minutes from the January 8th meeting. If I can have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes from January 8th? All in favor of accepting those minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes from January 8th are approved. Minutes from January 22nd.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor of accepting the minutes from January 22nd?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are at our superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Padalino.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. So I'm going to shuffle the superintendents a little bit, and we're going to start with our community partnerships presentation, and I will introduce Ms. Mary Beth Bonville, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Public Relations.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share about our community partnerships here in the Kingston City School District. Tonight, we will hear from a few of our amazing partners who are here this evening to co-present with me, as well as learn a little bit more about the supports that we have in place for our students, working in conjunction with our internship and career center. Before we dive in, I would like to introduce our co-presenters that will be joining me this evening. We have Heidi Kirchner, President and CEO of the YMCA of Kingston and Ulster County. I think many of you know Heidi. Ashley Knox, Chief Executive Officer of Go Beyond Greatness. Melissa Ugarte, Founder and Executive Director of the Educated Edge. And of course, a face that you also know, our own Tina Diurna, who is, it's a mouthful, transition, internship, career center, and work-based learning coordinator. So they will all be joining me this evening for this presentation. So welcome and thank you for coming. So this word cloud doesn't really allow me to get all of our community partners into one space. We have so many that have...we have really grown over the years, and I'm very proud of that. Our partner organizations help our schools build and strengthen healthy learning environments by providing both academic and social-emotional programming and increasing equity in education. Studies show that these partnerships often lead to stronger social and emotional skill development, enhance student and faculty engagement...excuse me, student and family engagement, probably faculty too, higher attendance rates, and lower chronic absenteeism, and improved academic outcomes. The majority of this presentation will focus on the secondary level, but I wanted to be sure to highlight the partners at our elementary level as well, because there are many. Of course, there is an intentional crossover that occurs between our secondary and elementary partnerships, so as to have vertical alignment of our programming and reinforcement of skills for all of our students. Some of these partnerships include the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, the Kingston Parks and Rec, Today's Students, Tomorrow's Teachers, Dr. Javon Hunter, Family of Woodstock, Cornell Cooperative, and Wild Earth. These are the ways in which our students are impacted and the ways that they deal with our community partnerships on a daily basis. And you'll be hearing more about these in greater detail as the ladies step up and talk about the work that they do with our kids. Of course, no relationship works without collaboration and communication. Ms. Diurna and I began the Community Partnership Council back in 2019, was very humble back then, in our Kingston High School cafeteria. These meetings occur biannually. We pick different topics for each meeting, and we send that agenda out ahead of time so that the community partners know exactly what we're going to be talking about. We give them opportunity for networking. We have presentations on that topic, either from us, from the district, or from the community partners themselves, sometimes both. Our last meeting was probably our best yet, and I know that Ms. Jordan was there, Mr. Lamb was there, and we appreciate that support. And our next meeting, to be determined, will be in spring of 2025. One of the topics that we talked about at this last meeting was funding and the need for us to really go out and get some more grants so that this fantastic work that we're doing can continue. That's not to say that we haven't talked about that in the past. We have had our community partners sit with us around the table, both building leaders, other administrators, even teachers. We have reviewed data with them, and we've asked them for data so that we can look at that and see the impact of their programming. However, that is very much changing in the years to come. I've been working really closely with my amazing colleagues in the Teaching and Learning Department, talking about how do we best align this work to correspond with the SEPS, the School of Comprehensive Education Plan, as well as our district improvement plan. We have to show that there's a correlation and that we're moving the needle with the work of these community partners. And we know that we are, but we have to show that. And so we've been working on that. It was a topic of our last meeting, to work on how do we measure and how do we prove that this work is having an impact. Speaking of impact, I am now going to turn this over to Melissa Ugarte from the Educated Edge. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. I'm not as tall as Beth, so I don't know if you can see me or not. Would you mind if I kind of step over to the side? Can you see me here?
I think so.
Very beautiful. My name is Melissa, and I've been educator for 23 years. I started off as a social worker, went back to school to teach English, went back to school to become an assistant principal, and the past seven years, I've been self-employed. I started a small training and coaching agency in Rhode Island on restorative practices. So just in the past seven years, I've supported over 150 schools, 10,000 educators in training and coaching, and I've had this partnership with Kingston going on four years now. So I know that the print might be a little bit small here, and I'm just going to sum up this line, but essentially, the goal of the training is to provide enrichment to our adult practitioners. A lot of our partnerships will focus on student outcomes, which is absolutely amazing. My development helps the adult look at themselves and say, what kind of behaviors do I bring into the classroom? And how do these behaviors impact student outcomes? So all of our development and training has everything to do with, one, seeing restoration as a way of life and a communication philosophy, rather than a behavior program that's to be inherent. Here, the goal is for our adult practitioners to pay attention to their language, things that we're saying, things that we're asking of students and even our colleagues, to ensure that we're focusing more on proactive connection rather than focusing on responsive redirecting behaviors. And lastly, making it a huge point and understanding that our language, when it's empathetic but also balances firmness, focuses on trauma-informed practices, and also teaches soft skills to our students, it's an opportunity for our adults to model this. There's a lot of information here, but essentially, when I'm training our practitioners, I want them to understand that if they want to be able to work with someone, being restorative means that we balance our ability to engage, which is limit-setting and boundaries and structure, with our ability to extend support with others. Are we able to be encouraging and nurturing and supportive and empathetic and understanding in times of need? When we live in this blue box, we balance both support and engagement, and our students are likely to, one, listen to us a lot better, want to have established connection with us, but more importantly, they're willing to learn from us. Again, another slide with a lot of information, but because restoration is a verbal strategy and communication philosophy, we look at ways that we can informally have connections, so quick and easy, proactive and fun, interesting and exciting, but then as situations become more complicated, as our relationships become more involved, there's a need for us to learn language as a little bit more formal, maybe a little bit more strict and structured. Not only do we teach them communication strategies one-to-one, but also in large groups. So structures where everyone participates in conversation, structures where people can volunteer, because it's a little bit higher risk, and structures where there's large groups of people where everyone's expected to participate. So what's beautiful about our partnership in the past three, almost four years, is I've been working at both of the middle schools and the high school. Around 134 practitioners have received my training on all three campuses. And at these trainings, people have stepped forward, saying, I'm really interested in restorative with Melissa, and I want to serve on what's called a restorative leadership team. So once a month for the past three years, I've been going into these programs and providing training to these practitioners so they can turn key provide development to the rest of their staff. So it's a train-the-trainer model. And on top of coaching, we've also been inside the classroom, providing hands-on support of helping practitioners understand this philosophy and receiving training and coaching in real time. These are probably the next most important slides here, and this is what makes me most excited. Here, this is data from our trainings. We took surveys from 123 people when we did trainings at both of the middle school and the high school. So this is consolidated information. I did not differentiate. However, this is how practitioners felt about the training. You'll see here, blue, that's very good. Here, in the orange, we do have outliers every once in a while who say, you know what, I don't know if restoration is my thing. I don't know if I want to practice this. I don't know if I believe this, and that's okay. But here, you'll notice that the majority of practitioners believe that the training was well-organized, and they felt confident in being able to implement some of the strategies in class. More importantly, and I'm almost done, here, this is their readiness to practice restorative practices. So out of 134 people, the majority felt that they were able to practice some form of healthier proactive conversation tactics with not only the students, but also with their colleagues. And I think here, what's most important is this very last question, and I don't know if you have this in front of you, but it says, I believe restorative practices can help improve academic outcomes for our students. So as much as I'm trauma-informed and social-emotional focused, all of the languages here are towards helping our students understand that we can use proper communication to teach our students. That's it. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to thank Dr. Padalino, Beth Bonville, Upper Administration of Kingston City School District, and our Board of Education. For those that don't know me, Ashley Knox, CEO of Go Beyond Greatness. We have been established for...we're going up on 11 years since 2014, and Kingston City School District was our first partnership in terms of state agencies as New York State Certified Educational Consultancy. More recently, Governor Hochul awarded us with an amazing award. It was a business award, one of four businesses within New York State, New York City and New York City, receiving the 2024 MWBE Carey Gebay Business Award of Innovation and Excellence. So what I'm going to do is just share a little bit about who we are, but I think the most important piece that I want to share here is, I consider myself a tiger. I'm a graduate of KHS Alumni 2001, and as we say, once a tiger, what's the next part?
Always a tiger, exactly, yeah.
All right. Alongside me, I'm honored to have CEO Heidi Kirchner. So within the work that we do within school districts, particularly with Kingston, is that we also offer wraparound services so that when students finish their days during the school, we work closely with the YMCA to provide those wraparound services and making sure that students receive quality-like programs that align a lot with the New York State Tier III and IV of Social-Emotional Leadership Development. And then what we're known for in terms of Go Beyond Greatness is providing college and career readiness skills, just the idea of building the next generation of young professionals in partnership with our local school districts. What I'll do is, I'm going to share more of impact, but we align greatly what Melissa and Educated Edge, you know, just emphasized around aligning our work with social-emotional learning that has direct impact on academic outcomes. High school retention, as well as high school graduation rates. And then GBG serves as a bridge where we support college matriculation and also helping young people to make sense of, why am I going to school five days a week from 8:00 to 2:00 and after? How are we connecting them to the business community so that they can fall in place in terms of career placement based on their passion and helping them to translate that into a vocation? And so the academic year of 2023 to 2024, we work closely with the YMCA and Kingston High School to provide what we call Map My Future, navigating the admissions process. And we enrolled a total of 32 high school students from ninth to 12th grade. Out of the 32, there were 16 seniors. So the program started in September, ended in June. What was included, I would say, as you could see, a college campus tours. We did a New York State Capitol regional tour to U Albany, and then to show the students the community college level at Hudson Valley. In addition to that, we did a mid-celebration to invite the parents. Parent involvement is extremely, extremely important when we're looking at student success and being able to maintain that. And so we held a mid-celebration at Frank Guido's Little Italy, right, to give students just, you know, that wow factor of celebration. If you work hard, then what? You play hard, or you eat well, something like that. From there, we did a part two where we welcomed them back. And so once they were able to complete part one, I'll just give you some stats here. Out of the 16 seniors, so they're learning the processes of being able to get their applications together and support them, and being able to also submit their applications to the college of their choice. 13 out of the 16 seniors applied and received college acceptance. There was one out of the 16 students that did apply. GPA was just not right there, and so they did receive a denial and decided to go into the working world. And then two out of the 16 seniors also were high school students that half-time they went to Ulster BOSI's. And so the two of them knew exactly what their life pathway should be, which is, you know, emphasis of the career-academic pathway partnership that you have with SUNY Ulster as well as BOSI's. And so the two out of the 16 took on a career vocational path. I believe one went into cosmetology, and then the other in social entrepreneurship. That entrepreneurship at BOSI's is quite impressive. I'll keep going. After...so the spring, spring of 2024, we invited students to come back with us, because right when you think that students are prepared for college, then you find out that, you know, this is their first-time experience. So part two was a focus on, once you receive college application acceptance, what do you do then? How do you support yourself in knowing how to navigate through the last processes before you actually move onto campus? So that's learning how to do student deposits, learning how to sign up for the college orientations and getting their classes together with, you know, their new advisors, right, and really helping them to bridge out to the next steps of their life success. The second program that we did, this would have been summer of 2024, we are part of the KHS Summer Nine Academy, where we provide what we call, it's a program series called the Build Your Brand Project. It's a social-emotional leadership development program. We worked with a total of 89 incoming ninth graders, so looking at the frameworks of transitional educational programming and helping students to mature as they go from middle school to high school. In this program, as you can see, it's fun, it's interactive, where we challenge students to say, middle school's over, you're now going into high school. What do you want to be known for, and how do you take control over that now by building a personal brand for yourself as you enter into this new stage of life as a high school student? We'll show a video, so you can just have just a sneak peek of what it looks like with the incoming ninth graders and them building their personal brand. Thank you, Beth. While we get the video, I wanted to share, this is directed to Dr. Padalino. Wonderful to highlight Dani. Daniela is one of our shining stars with Go Beyond Greatness as well. As you were reading, all of the different organizations that she's a part of, I said to Heidi, I said, oh, she's a part of GBG. Heidi says, oh, she's a YMCA member. I said, her profile's going to go on and on and on. You'll have to add those two, if she's highlighted again, if you will. But yes, here we go. Yeah, so what you're seeing again is, you know, the beginning steps in that last stage of K through 12, and how we're aligning ourselves with 21st-century educational skills and college and career readiness, helping them to understand what they're taking in the classroom, why is it important to do well in math, in science, and in English? How does that show up for me as a young professional? And be able to build my skills as a high school student so that there's no question in terms of my professional success after I graduate? And making us all proud, because again, once a tiger, we're always a tiger. Enjoy. All right, so that'll give you...that's just a preview. For, if you'd like to see the whole thing, you can find us on YouTube. But if you do watch us on YouTube, I just ask if you follow us, like us, trying to build up our YouTube followers. Marketing at its best, that's personal branding. There you go. Can't teach it and not be about it. Lastly, so again, it's such a pleasure working with Heidi and the YMCA, because again, what are the students doing at 6 o'clock, or what time is it now? It's 7:30 PM. Right now, we have a group of Kingston High School students at the YMCA in the Broadway Room, and they are now participating in a program called Be Discovered by Today's Employers. So last year, we committed to college preparation. This year, what we're doing, we'd like to alternate the years, and now we're focusing on our career development. So we started in September, Part One of Be Discovered by Today's Employers. This is early career exploration, helping students to make connections to the business community. helping students to make connections to the business community. For those that know me, I'm one of the Board of Trustees for the Community Foundations of the Hudson Valley and also the first Chairwoman of our Ulster Advisory Board. And so, in that, you know, within the networks that I have and what we have as GBG, helping students to make those direct connections to the local business to community, whether it's looking for internships, apprenticeships. We're working closely with the New York City Department of Environmental Protection, the Mid-Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union, Ulster Savings Bank, Marketed Manufacturing Media, and many more. And so, part one completed December 18th. We enrolled about 32 high school students. And then we also offered a GBG Ambassador Program where students could step a little bit deeper into their leadership for those that wanted to stick with us a little bit longer in the evening times outside of school hours, and we were able to recruit nine out of the 32 high school students. Well, part two, let me give you, go to the next slide. In addition to that, we also offer for individualized support services. So these are students that may just need some individualized one-on-one counseling with our program coordinators. We offer college and career drop-in hours at the YMCA, which usually takes place after our workshops. And then this is the flyer that I wanted to show you today. Today is the kickoff of the Be Discovered by Today's Employers Part Two, and helping students to dive deeper into how they are, what they're learning in school academically and helping them to translate those, that knowledge, the skill sets into a passion where they can, you know, find themselves confident in whatever they invest into, what academically are going directly into the job world. And so, what you'll see is that, you know, we're gonna have different special guests coming in. They'll do professional headshots. They'll learn how to do elevator pitch lines, free food, who doesn't like food, and what we always say, good vibes, because that's truly the framework of social-emotional learning and regulating yourself and being able to tap into, where are the environments where I find a sense of belonging, which also aligns with a lot of the school district's target goals on what we want to foster within the Kingston City School District community. I'm gonna stop here, and then I'm gonna ask Heidi if you want to add a few things here.
So I get the joy of being the person who's in the facility, seeing the kids come and go and participate. I love this particular program. In true GBG fashion, it does, she does take a different slant to take, get the kids to focus on, you know, what's your end game? Like, what do you want to be? And then back it up from there, which sometimes for some kids is very effective because they're like, ah, you know, I'm gonna take this in school, but okay, what do you want to do with it? I don't know, you know. So this is really effective, and it gets the kids together. They learn together how to explore things. They also look at, you know, you think you want to do something, but she looks at, okay, let's look at what your strengths are. And so, maybe that strength will take you on that pathway, or maybe that strength will lead you on another path of which you can explore. So it's nice to see this happening and watching it. I know you're very entwined in it, but I get to step back and look. The other one thing that I also noticed in this program is, I usually try to get in the first day of the program and talk to the kids and see how they're doing, what, you know, what's on their mind, and then definitely have to get in at the end of the program again and talk to them. And I'll never forget the program in the fall, when I first went in, the kids were like, "Hi, how are you?" Yeah, you know, and you're talking to them, you're trying to get. And then when I went in the last week, they're like, "Hey, how are you doing?" And I was like, "Well, how did everything go?" They're like, "Great." I was, you know, asked them, "What'd you learn?" And they were excited about, you know, getting their headshots and, you know, learning about, you know, how to present their brand. And this particular session that's coming up is equally as exciting because now they're gonna take a look at, you know, not only where they want to go and how they're gonna get there, but they're gonna learn about how internships can be very powerful and, you know, you know, getting yourself, if you plan it right, getting yourself into college, and then also lining yourself up for a great career and finding, you know, those employers and how to make that work and how to make that digital connection. And I never realized the value of, you know, that digital connection until, like, my son is working on the West Coast in a software, and he had this one kid from U-Mich who cold-called him. He found him on LinkedIn, cold-called him because he was thinking about wanting to work for that, his company. And in cold-calling him, then he, you know, it was kind of, my son said, "This was weird." He says, "I don't know why I didn't think of this." He cold-called him and then talked to him, and as a result, now he's gonna get a reference if he wants to go into that company. So, you know, those are skills that you're teaching them that who knew of, you know. So these are great things that they're learning. They're a really good set of kids. And this semester, they're going to Monroe University in New Rochelle, correct?
Correct.
So that's a, that's a great opportunity for the kids. So it's fantastic. I have to thank the school district for allowing us to be partners and collaborate. I thank Ashley for being a great collaborator. People think, you know, it comes off your tongue rather easily, but it's not. You have to understand each other's objectives, and even though your missions might align, how you go about things might be different. You have to have patience. You have to trust one another. And there will be conflicts, but you have to understand how you have conflict resolution, which is very helpful. I loved your slides, by the way. I'm taking a few of those nuggets. And it really does help us as a community, you know, allow our youth, who are the most important thing in our lives, to thrive and to grow and to feel comfortable in their skins and do great things. So I thank this population. I thank the school board. I thank the school. I thank my partners. Thank you very much for allowing this to happen.
Hello, all. I'm Tina Dierna. I work at Kingston High School. Do I have to stay behind here? All right, cool. I'll come this way. So I am the Internship and Career Coordinator, Work-Based Learner Coordinator, and the Community Partnership Liaison. These all three kind of work in synergy with one another, and the reason being that a huge part of my job is working with students with disabilities. And disabilities look different for everyone. That could be from vision, movement, thinking, remembering, I myself am an adult with a disability. I also really can relate to students who are just struggling. So I wanna just bring this to the forefront and let you think about this as we are moving through this tonight's presentation. I promise it won't be too long. So we work with AccessVR, which is Adult Career and Continuing Education Services Vocational Rehabilitation. That's really big. Parents don't understand it. Students definitely don't get it. I still have a struggle with what exactly does this mean. But as a high school student, you are a young person who is entering into the workforce. You're 14, you're thinking, "Okay, I want to work." At 13, you might even want to volunteer. And so, are students with a disability or a 504 plan, maybe they have a medical health issue, or they have asthma or mental health condition. Those students can come in and fill out a pre-Access application with us, and that gives them ability at 14 and 15 years old to walk in and work with our partners without going through the process of filling out an AccessVR application. Valerie Correlli is here with her lovely assistant, Camille Correlli, as you all know. And they work with our students in ninth and 10th grade right at Kingston High School and within the community, linking them to opportunity in both job placement, internships, workforce development, and career development. Which also kind of leads into C-DAS. So I'm working with our partners in the community. I'm working with our students. I'm working with our partners who work with students with disabilities. And it all kind of stems with this final career development and occupational studies commencement credential. So a lot of our students with a disability who are really struggling to pass that Regents exam might require a C-DAS. And if they don't require it and they pass, they can still exit with a credential on top of their local or Regents diploma. So it's an alternative pathway to the diploma for both the Regents or local. And the C-DAS is a credential that is intended to prepare students with skills necessary. So that's that internship placement, that's that opportunity to work with businesses and leaders in our community to go ahead and become familiar with the workforce. The requirements are career plan, so they need to work with their school counselors over the four years that they're at high school on a career plan. And they need to demonstrate the skills and knowledge in, for the workforce that they're thinking about. They have to work on communication, problem-solving, teamwork. I make a lot of my students get up and do presentations. So some of the coursework within the Internship and Career Center is also focused around the C-DAS credential. So a student who doesn't need a C-DAS can also go through and do an internship, but they're both mirrored programs. So they need 54 hours of work-based learning. That is considered like a half a credit, 216 hours of career and tech education, so CTE coursework, either whether that's at BOSEs or if that's in-house, and that work experience. An employability profile that kind of goes over their competence, skills, and where they've achieved. And then, I would just say, the importance of this is that it's practical, real-world experience. I like to utilize, my one student who wanted to become a veterinarian, went into the vet office, Phamisters, and saw some blood and said, "This isn't for me." They called me up, "Miss Dierna, I don't think this is the right career path for this kid." And it was great because that kid didn't go off to college to be a vet, a vet tech. These are some of the opportunities that are just linked to the Internship and Career Center. So we've taken students out on field trips. We've brought field trips in. We've done open-mic nights. We've gotten out in the public and done a lot of different activities. I myself run two clubs at Kingston High School. We run Period Power Club. It's a self-acacy group for menstruators and non- menstruators. But through that, they've done Hudson documentary, podcasting, community service, getting out there and getting those hours in. And we've just launched an eco club called Hudson's Tomorrow, where they are doing trash pickup throughout our community to kind of keep the microplastics out of the river and learning all about that as well. So Ms. Seg and I have, I've hooked her in to help me out with that club because there's just so many kids. So throughout my experience, I've, I've been working with students working at Kingston High School for 10 years. 450 kids in our school right now identify as having an IEP or a 504 plan. That's a lot of students for one person to try and really reach. So I do this with the help of an MSW student. Two this year, I'm told I only get to have one next year. We have 175 youth participants who are participating in employment training through our partnerships and organizations that we've worked with, two activist clubs that I just mentioned. And Valerie, who's here from C3Quest, Learner First, she has taken on about 75 kids this year alone who are in ninth and 10th grade. That opportunity isn't out there for every school district. It's the districts who opt into it because we have me at the district, somebody who's able to continue doing that paperwork and assigning people to come in and work with the kids. It's allowed us to have opportunities for these kids and really see them really come into themselves, whether they're organizing our pre-store at Kingston High School or they're participating in a paid internship. And let's hear from the KHS students.
So we wanted to be sure, you know, in line with, and many of you've heard this, you know, student voice is something that you'll see in many of our improvement plans. So we wanted to also make sure that you've heard from our students.
Kingston City School District partners with approximately 26 community-based organizations and businesses, which help provide students with valuable opportunities for growth. New partnerships support internships, career development, tutoring, intellectual engagement, and social and emotional learning. Through the Internship and Career Center at Kingston High School, students can gain firsthand experience in potential career paths, helping them prepare for the future.
In group concept, I learned communication skills, working skills with, like, working with others. We got to build birdhouses. We got to build a fence. And they helped us work with our resident.
How does that position you now for a possible job?
It's, I get, I'm really good, I feel, because I get to have more skills than some other people that will apply for the same job.
These collaborations can often open doors, build skills, and make way for meaningful and sustainable work.
As a vet officer, that's exactly what I want to be. I want to be a veterinarian. And so now being, I'm able to see it hands-on, first person is great. I've seen spaying. I've seen neutering. I've seen a dental appointment. Those are really the main ones. I'm not there as, because they start doing the surgeries around 10:30. So I'm usually there like in the morning, then I gotta get ready to go. But I just think of going out on the weekends so I can stay there a little longer. It helps me advance my technical and my soft skills, mainly technical, but just being able to have that experience for going to college is a good, is just good, you know, so.
Sometimes the internship opportunities help redirect students in other directions.
I ended up wanting a job. I was just doing close stuff. I wanted something else to do, you know, start getting, you know, to get paid. And at the time, I wanted to be an interior designer. And Ms. Dierna thought that it would be a good fit for me to go work at a working. So I do social media.
Is this something that you're looking to do in the future?
Um, so I want to be a psychologist in the future. Everything like kind of changed after I started applying to colleges.
The benefits of community partnerships aren't just for students. These partnerships also can lead to positive impacts for the community itself.
One program that I really, I found and I really enjoyed was the Climate Leadership Partnership.
And what did you do there?
Well, the Climate Leadership Partnership is basically just a, I mean, obviously a partnership that pulls, you know, kids together from a whole, like, globe to create and implement an environmental stewardship program at their own school and level of community. And so I applied to that, that end, and then I continued and made my own personal project.
And what is your project?
I'm so glad you asked. So right here, I have, or here, Hudson's Tomorrow. And, you know, after that program, I worked and collaborated with people at Kingston. I had my own peers. We started off as like, as a whole junior force, and we kept expanding, kept working.
What do you work on?
So Hudson's Tomorrow is a youth group center, including the water quality and aquatic systems of the Hudson River.
Building strong community partnerships takes effort, but the impact on students' learning and success is invaluable. For Kingston City School District, Chris Newt Conti.
So before I close out, I just want to say, I'm so glad that Dr. Shang is here. So even though he said that he came to see Dr. Potolino, I still say that it was really about me because there's Christine Conti from your own team showing our partnership that we have between the Kingston City School District and BOSEs. And I absolutely love all of your team from BOSEs, as you well know, and I'm so grateful for them every day. So I wanted to just also thank you, seeing you here. So thank you, everybody. If you have any questions for me or for any of the fabulous ladies that presented tonight, we are happy to answer those questions.
Questions. Mrs. Jordan?
I don't really have a question as much as a thank you to all of you because I think you have enriched the school community with all of your talents. And I think that this is such a time of need for us to all come together. And so I do appreciate all of your work. Thank you so much.
Any other? Dr. Collins?
I mostly just want to echo Ms. Jordan's comment, but also just say, I know how hard it is, how hard work it is to build and create and sustain these kinds of partnerships. And it is so incredibly important for our school and for our kids, both just success academically but in life, and knowing that school and life are not separate worlds at all, obviously. So thank you so much for the work of everything you're doing. It's really inspiring.
Any others?
I just like, it's similar, a similar echo, but I really, I enjoyed the modeling of the speech itself when you're saying, "Oh, I'm a little shorter. I'm gonna stand over here. I'm a little taller. I'm gonna stand over here." And this is just in combination with owning your differences and branding what your strengths are and, you know, emulating strength-based leadership, which it just seems like every single one of you are doing and that the program is really highly focused on. It's impressive and I don't, I just, I love it. And thank you.
Any other questions? I did have one question on the restorative practices. I, I just wondered how the staff was identified to be trained. Was it, did they volunteer? You may have covered that and I missed it, but I'm, I'm just curious. Because I'm a firm believer in restorative practices, but I know the buy-in is really, really tough sometimes. So I, I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, I love that. I actually, I think it's a huge testament to the administrators at both middle schools and high schools. They left a lot of space and a lot of room to offer the training. And the entire school population at all three buildings went to the training. So it happened in September of last year, and we did it in the cafeteria. The entire community came. I facilitated trainings over like 60-plus people, I think, in those days. They participated in the training and walked away. There is a challenge with buy-in a lot of the times because it's a mindset. I think if you're a practitioner who values, you know, the worth of another individual, you're going to take a step back and say, "I want to focus on my language. I want to, I want to ensure it lands well. I want to use empathy, but also be firm and explicit." So if you're going into a training where you know you're learning that, but you don't initially believe that as a person, I think walking away saying, "I'm going to do this," will be a challenge. But what I've seen in Kingston is that people are open to learning this. And if you saw those bar graphs, the majority of it was pretty fantastic. Each educator walked away saying, "I can do this and I believe in it."
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all. It was a great presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bonville, and your guests. Next, we have our very first preliminary budget projection and presentation with Ms. Carvin.
Good evening. So here we go. I got it. You're good. Thank you. So this is our initial conversation and a snapshot of where we are in this moment. And I say it that way because, yes, it's February 5th and it's early in the process. As most of you know, the executive budget from the governor, her proposal actually just came out about a week and a half ago. And the first step in the process, the budget process starts before the holidays. But in terms of conversations and looking at exactly where we are and where we're going, one of the first steps is taking a look at that budget and the proposal, especially with changes in foundation aid and many of them you have heard about. So we're just going to dive in. So as I was stating, the budget development process, it started a couple of months ago, actually a little bit prior to that. So we start by looking at our current year budget and expenses and where we are year-to-date, where we see them trending. From there, we start predicting revenues as different, different pieces of information comes in, starting with state aid, our property tax cap, and fund balances. And this is where we are in this moment, actually a, a larger step in this moment. At the same time, looking at employee salaries and benefits costs, which, as you know, are a little bit more than 75% of our budget, as well as most school districts and companies. Estimating other fixed costs, looking at our line item expenditures, and these are ongoing steps and conversations that have started months ago. Evaluating existing programs and prioritizing the enhancements that are needed, requested, and laying those out. Adjusting our revenue estimates once the New York State budget is passed. And then balancing out our expenditures and our revenues is the process from beginning to end. For those who are not familiar, especially those watching at home, I know you all are. Our primary revenue sources, our state and federal aid, interest income. It's been better in the past couple of years. Our payments in lieu of taxes and our tax interest, tuition and miscellaneous revenues, appropriated fund balance that we use to balance out our budget, and as we are all familiar with, the property tax levy, which there is a calculation every year that is set by New York State, so we can't just levy what we so choose. Expense drivers, as we said before, salaries and benefits. Transportation, we transport well over 5,000 children each and every day across 98 square miles. Many people don't realize how vast geographically our school district is. Our cost for students with disabilities, providing supports necessary for their education, debt service, contractual expenses, our textbook, equipment supplies, and operations and maintenance. For those who are not familiar, we have 11 buildings in our district and over a million square feet. So this year, looking at '25, '26, our preliminary revenues. Major changes, stated increase, and we'll look at the executive budget proposal in a next slide. Our maximum tax levy increase, which at this moment is just about $7.3 million. Decrease in interest income. As you all know, the economy is shifting, so rates will not always be what they were. So that's a decrease projection of $850,000 from our current '24, '25 budget. Reduction in pilot income. There was a pilot that we had on the books that ended prematurely, that was ended prematurely. So there's a reduction in there. A reduction in our other revenues to the tune of about $300,000. So our net total revenue increase right now is $7.9 million. But over a budget the size of ours is not very large. So here we are with a layout of Governor Hokel's executive budget proposal. So there are some interesting changes this year. There's been a lot of conversation, as you know, about foundation aid and proposed changes. We went from last cycle, two cycles ago, when Governor Hokel committed to letting the state aid formula run, foundation aid formula run fully as it's written in law, which resulted in a significant increase in state aid revenue for Kingston City School District, still underfunded, but still a significant increase, step in the right direction. And then last year pivoting to a change in the formula related to CPI. So last year, that netted actually a loss, so to speak, of just under $1 million for us. Here we are this year with proposed changes to the formula and different factors have changed. And this year, even though there's a 2% increase, that is the minimum in terms of the governor's proposal. And that change is a net effect of just under $1.4 million. So that's a, a large shift for our district and very meaningful because our needs have not changed and the supports that we are committed to providing our students are, have not changed. Building aid, the governor's projection is a decrease. Actually, in terms of our calculations and what we do have on our books in terms of debt that we'll be getting aided on, it is actually higher than this number. But I wanted to walk through this with you all because this is what you have all have seen and it gives an understanding of the different factors that go into our revenue projections. In our next conversations, we'll have more information about our calculations and estimates for our various expense-based aids. And we'll be able to lay out a side-by-side, but at this moment in time, this snapshot is too early. Some of our other expense-based aids, and expense-based simply means we get aided based on how much we've spent. So we expect transportation aid to be close to this number. Our Bozies aid, our estimate will be more final at the end of the month when we have more information in. And we are working with our partners in the special ed department to finalize our special education aid-related revenues. Instruction material aids are pretty flat, and this is where we expect to come in, as well as this high-tax aid, which is designated by the state. It doesn't change year-to-year. Please, when you see these reports, pay no attention, with all due respect, to the aid that is listed in for pre-K. And the reason why, the way the state runs come out, if you look at the runs, they put that aid in this, in line with all of our other actual foundation aid and expense-based aids. It doesn't come in that way. And we are not guaranteed $3.2 million. It's what's available, and it's a separate part of money. So this is not, and I just want to say this for the public as well, since people do go and look at different pieces of information. This is not aid that we get directly from the state. This is completely separate, handled almost like a grant. So our actual, and this is why I like this snapshot that the association has put together. So this estimate of $101.9 million is the more accurate calculation of what Governor Hokel has put out in her executive budget proposal for our state aid number for the '25, '26 budget. I know that was a lot of talking. Does anyone have any questions about the executive budget? Okay. So stay tuned for updates and more detailed information in our future conversations. So now shifting to the tax cap, because as you know, property taxes, after foundation aid, uh, state aid, I should say, is our highest revenue driver. So there are five factors, and you all have heard me say this before, that drive our maximum allowable tax levy, which is the calculation set forth by New York State law. It starts with current year tax levy, where we leave off. This year is where we start for next year's calculation. Next is the tax-based growth factor. The real property tax or the, the tax department for New York State, they calculate the tax-based growth factor for each and every school district individually. So that comes directly from the state. CPI or inflation, this is still a significant factor. And what the formula used to have is the, the lesser of 2% or actual inflation. Governor Hokel's change last year, just to remind everybody, took a 10-year snapshot and removed the outliers to pretty much keep inflation flat. And that does, even if nothing else changes, because it did for us, it does shift how much aid a district actually gets. So as conversations are being had with changes in state aid and the legislature is listening to information and making decisions, for those of you who like to speak to your legislators, this is one area of the formula that if it would at least be returned to what it was, so that actual, well, even so that actual CPI could be a factor that's better than what it was, it would be wildly helpful. Because as we know, 2% inflation, it's not in our near future at all. Can't even remember the last time it was. Pilot payments, those are a factor, as you'll see in our tax cap calculation in our next slide. That factors in. And then finally, exclusions that are placed in the formula for capital and also for large swings in retirement payments by, as an employer. So our calculation for our tax levy limit. The tax levy for the '24, '25 budget that we're currently executing was $117.6 million. So that was our starting point. And along the sides, for those of you who are mathematically inclined, we have the actual mathematic pieces over here. But what I want to point out, our tax-based growth factor, the things that we spoke about in our last slide, were flat to last year. Pilots, we use, we have to use last year's number. Last year's exemptions. But right here, this is in yellow because this is the only thing, the only area where 2% could even possibly be a factor. Because many people mistakenly think of this because it's called by many people the 2% tax cap, and that is not accurate. The only place that it comes in potentially is with CPI. So we're at 2% because actual inflation was higher than that. Pilots for the coming year, as I said, they decreased. And our exclusions have shifted year-to-year, which brings us to a maximum allowable levy of 120, just under $125 million, $124.9 million. It's an increase of $7.2 million, and the percent increase is 6.17%. Now, this is still an early snapshot of where we are because some of the factors, specifically those related to our capital tax levy, since we have our capital project in motion in terms of bids going out, expenses being updated in, in this moment. This is where we are at this moment. We are having additional conversations now that we have awarded bids and phase two is being planned out, just taking a look at what the cash flow projections are. So working with our project management team and our financial advisor to just revisit our numbers in the next few days again. This may change, but this is from the information that we have and the plans that we had put forth. Right now, we are at 6.17%. So what does that mean for our rollover budget summary? This is literally a rollover budget, meaning, I'm just going to skip to the bottom for a minute. The only things that we have increased, aside from our revenues, the tax levy, and estimating revenues based on what we have, on the expense side, our initial salary projections, which include retirement and taxes and all those other things, and updating our debt service schedule with what we know our payments are going to be for next year. Everything else is just rolling over what we're currently spending at this moment. So what we are working on at this moment, our health insurance benefits estimates, transportation confirming those costs and, and our needs for next year. Bozies services, we have our initial meeting with Dr. Shanker's team next week. Special education, we are in conversations and have been for some time about projections and the trends that we're seeing. Insurance and program review, looking at our programs and what we are currently running and where we can make shifts and changes to balance everything out, as well as needs. So to the numbers. Our rollover budget is $249.5 million. Our preliminary revenue all-in is $232.2 million. As just stated, our maximum tax levy is $124.89 million. So that gives us a deficit in this moment. This is very preliminary, a early snapshot in time of $17.2 million. We definitely do not expect to stay here, but in this moment, these are where the numbers are, rolling over current expenses with our most significant contractual changes that we know about, and then looking at our revenues as they stand in this moment. Thank you. Any questions? I know that was a lot.
Mr. Reiner?
Can you go back to the slide, if possible, where it talks about like the pilots and the levy?
Absolutely. The calculation?
Yeah.
Yes.
So our, so it says pilots for this incoming year. That's taken out before the levy? So like if, if a property doesn't have a pilot, right, then the value is just in the levy and the, the con, like, that property tax would be part of the property tax levy?
Yes.
But if, if we actually have a pilot agreement in place, then that's outside of the property tax levy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And that's why they get, it gets its own line in the formula. So then what actually happens is you see, what actually impacts the formula is the year-over-year change. So if nothing had changed with our pilots, it would really be a wash for this year because it's baked in, so to speak. We see this shift this year because one of our pilots in December, it was ended by the court. So then we had to, we won't have that on the books. So the, the change in pilot revenue is truly the impact that we see in the formula year-to-year.
Right. And the property value, because it comes off, it, that property, that specific property just goes back onto the levy.
Yes.
It can't change.
Right.
So it's increase in property tax value doesn't actually benefit us because it just, I mean, it benefits other taxpayers.
Yes.
But it doesn't benefit the school district.
Exactly.
Okay. I just, I didn't, I was not aware of that before the slide, so that's, that's all. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Reiner, the information that I spoke to the audit finance committee about laying out the differences between the executive budget and our revenue estimates, that would be forthcoming once we have more solid information in place.
Not, not a question, just a, a statement. Assistant Superintendent Carvin, just all gratitude for your detailed explanations, clear calculations, and professional presentation. Your gift to us all is your ability to make very complicated figures understandable to laypeople like me. So thank you. Very, very well done. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hopefully the numbers will change.
They will.
Dr. Shanker, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for kicking off the snow day.
No problem, Dr. Shanker.
Seven o'clock rule.
You know, I always like to be first.
And you know you did a good job where people applaud a budget presentation.
And I do want to just do quick things, say, I know those, those numbers look a certain way, and I get it. We've been here, for those who've been in the workforce long enough. We've been here before at this time of the year. We, we actually have, this is probably the earliest we've, we've ever presented. Many of these numbers have changed in the last four days while, while Ms. Carvin and I, Ms. Carvin and I have been working on this. So even today, at two, three o'clock this afternoon, Ms. Carvin wanted to change something in the presentation, and I said, "We're going to give them what we have right now. We'll change that for the next presentation." So we'll, so we, we are, there's still a lot of different oohing parts of, so, as I said, the sky's not falling. Don't panic. We'll get there.
Do you have any other district?
The only thing I, the only thing I had was, I was going to tell everyone to watch out for inclement weather announcements, but I guess it's a little late for that.
Okay. That brings us to Board of Education Committee reports, starting with facilities, I guess. So the Facilities Committee met on January 28th. The, the minutes were approved after we amended some of the language for better understanding. We got updates on projects, the smart schools and the energy performance projects are in the testing and verification phase of the project, dealing with some of the change orders that are, that have arisen over time. The capital project, the Phase 1 bids for windows at Bailey and Edson, or just Bailey?
Edson.
Yeah, bids. At the two schools, the delay worked to the advantage of the district to save about $500,000. A contractor kickoff meeting will be scheduled. And then the, the timeline, the indoor ceiling work will begin in April, and the major Phase 1 work will begin at the end of school in June. Phase 2 report, the architects are still waiting for technical comments from SED, and the Phase 2A plans for the Bailey kitchen have been filed with SED. Phase 3 designs for GW and Chambers were shared by KSQ. The plans include the upgrades to the lobby, indoor, new doors, secure vestibules, very similar to the presentations that we had for Edson and Bailey. KSQ has recommended that the geothermal work should not be included in this project. All schools will have upgrades in heating, ventilation, air conditioning. Geothermal was not part of the original capital project proposal. And without the nicere to funding, which was, was denied, it is not advised to continue with geothermal. They are looking at sustainable options for all of the plans, and there was a presentation or a discussion on air source heat pumps and VRF, which is variable refrigerant, refrigerant flow, something. Anyway, that was more technical than I could capture. Crosby boilers are failing and probably will have to be replaced before the Phase 5 plan, so different options are being investigated. We, the project phases will be summarized on the district website, it has already been upgraded, if anybody wants to look at that, so you can see the phases as they come around. And we did get a projected cost of the athletic field project that came in at $31 million. The discussion at the meeting suggested that, that perhaps we should look at different options. That's, remember, there was a lot of turf included in this total project. So KSQ will, and the project managers will go back and look at different options. Mr. Bogart reported on lead remediation that's ongoing. Kitchen faucets have been replaced, signage has been improved in the elementary schools, and water sampling is ongoing. The Crosby playground was taken down due to unsafe conditions, and the district, our district maintenance department is working with Crosby principal to identify replacement options, what to do with that space. And we did have one requested new business to get a summary of the debt service status, and Dr. Padalino agreed to do that. So we adjourned at 4:25, and our next meeting is February 25th? Or 20, it might be the 20th.
It's on yours, too.
Dr. Collins?
I had a question about, I know the, the Phase 1 details are on the website, I just pulled it up, actually. And the, I'm curious about the, when each phase completes. So Phase 1, the air conditioning starts, when you tune that, because of how it interfaces with Governor Hokel's law about maximum classroom temperature. So might we talk about, a little bit about those, if you know, when those air conditioning will be?
I actually have, I actually have a, a chart that would show you all that. I thought, after looking at that, I thought it was a lot to put on the website for, because it's a lot of, but I can slide back to the board, so everyone can see it, that BBL has given us, so it really brings out the whole, the whole capital project, so you're looking at the phasing, more or less.
Okay. But for the air conditioning, which I think is sort of on people's minds because of Governor Hokel's?
Yeah, well, the, I mean, the air conditioning won't go in before other projects, so you're looking at, some of our schools won't have air conditioning, some of them will have it in, in two years, some won't have it for four. You know, I think there's some, I, I plan on doing a little presentation on the, on how we're going to manage that, that new, that new law at our next meeting. So I think that there's an opportunity, there, during my superintendent's report, to kind of discuss that legislation, our reaction to that legislation, how we're going to handle it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
When you mentioned the turf issue with the athletic fields, are you saying that we're looking at not doing as much turf, because it would be cheaper?
Well, the question, I think, really is the Gruner site, or the Crosby site, because the plan called for a full track and athletic field that would be turfed, correct?
Correct.
And, and that is a pretty, that's $14 million. So the question was, do we need to do turf as extensively?
At the rate that we're trying to keep grass alive and trying to plug fields and, and redo and water shortages and et cetera, I, I think by the time you, what you would save, we're spending in seeding, manpower and et cetera on the others, so I...
Especially with limitations on what can be used to maintain natural grass, which we all support certainly. But we're limited. It's not so like what I can put in my backyard.
And I'd rather see us have wonderful fields and athletic facilities than try to keep grass alive that we can't keep alive. I mean, if...
Mr. Ryder.
Yeah. I, I mean, I was the one that brought up this question in the committee, and I think people need to like have all information before we're talking about it, like, so either go back to the public facilities, but it's a hefty capital project. It is, it is, it came in higher than maybe I would have thought, that, that I was expecting. And so my question was, do we need all of these areas? And, I mean, I think the answer probably is yes, and we should put it to the public, but I think that will be something that the whole board decides, once it's presented to us. It was just, it was a question about like value engineering and deciding whether, and it wasn't actually about the turf, it was about the track and the whole, one of the fields is going to be upgraded quite a bit. And so I don't know if you've seen the plans, but the plans aren't been, been in the library yet, unless they were.
Yeah, they were in the last, last month, our last meeting.
Okay.
So I think, I think the important thing, and I think, I, I agree with Mr. Ryder, I mean, there's, all the information isn't really there yet, and I think one of the requests of the committee was the value engineering, exactly. Is there another option for us here? Are there other things that maybe we can look at? Whether they be, you know, looking at less turf or doing some other things differently. So I think that there's, there's opportunities to take a look. I'm not going to come back and say, oh, we're going to cut $10 million off this project without significantly impacting what we're trying to do. But I, I think that there's an opportunity for us to look and be able to come back to everyone and say, this is what we have, this is, this is where we've kind of pared this down or made some changes here, and then it'll be time to make a real decision.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Our next is legislative action.
The Legislative Action Committee, which is scheduled for next week, February 11th, has been reshuffled for February 10th, if you could get that out. At the same time, 9:30, because there was a conflict for some committee members. Two members of the committee are planning on going up to the NISPA lobbying day. So you're moving to the 10th? We're moving to the 10th. And everyone is welcome to join us.
Thank you. Who's going to Lobby Day? Oh, okay.
I have a conflict, I'm not going.
Okay. Audit and Finance, Mr. Ryder.
Audit and Finance, so we met on January 28th for two and a half hours. So, I mean, this isn't normal, like oftentimes it'll be a half hour, 45-minute committee. So, so that is a very hefty agenda. I will synthesize what we talked about. We had Dan Baker come in, the city assessor, and talk about 421P tax exemptions. So there's 421P, which affects units that have to have 25% affordable housing, and they're typically bigger multifamily dwelling units. This is a 30-year exemption that brings back the tax value over time. I think eventually it's like 4% a year that increases. And then there's 421P2, which is an exemption for accessory dwelling units, and that is only a 10-year exemption for those who put small units on pre-existing residential properties. There was robust conversation and debate within the committee. I have spoken with some folks from the city just after that, that reached out and said, because it was brought up in the committee meeting to talk about maybe doing some financial modeling to try to help the board understand what this is like. Just so people do understand, these exemptions are not, like, this is instead of a pilot, and it's very specific kind of units that, or, or projects that would go after this as opposed to the unit, a, a pilot. And it's not expected that there would be like a lot of these if we do pass the exemptions. They're going to come back with us with more information. Tax collection update, 93% of taxes were collected by our tax office this year, so kudos to them. That's higher than most years in the past. I'm not going to bore you with the 25, 26 budget presentation that was phenomenally given, but you received the same one essentially tonight. We did then have a presentation by Mr. Parker and Mr. Corba on weapons detection systems. They talked about three different types of systems, gave the pros and cons. They talked about various different brands and prices. They kind of opened up that discussion, saying they weren't going to make any recommendations. And as our security experts, I've asked Dr. Padalino and them to get together and actually do make a recommendation, because none of us are, are experts in the, the safety field. So it would be good to have, not only a recommendation on whether they think it's necessary, but also which way they would go, like that. So it sounds like that might be possible. They're not cheap. I, I think they talked about purchasing one of the, the units, which would be the more efficient, but it's, it's in the $300,000 to $500,000 range. No. For the whole thing.
Does that include personnel, too?
No. So that's, that's, that's just the purchase of the units, and then...
For every single door through buildings, or what?
It would be one building. So every door in the high school, that was the only thing that was discussed. And it would increase the need for security officers. There were, they, it went all the way down to like, they could do it for a regular metal detector with none of the AI and none of, for, you know, like, I think it was $40,000.
Yeah.
But you'd probably need even more security, I think it was, it's on work. So we're, they're going to come back and at least some point, either to the full board or to that committee again, make a recommendation. Security guards, they also, Ms. Carbin, Mr. Parker, Mr. Corba gave a presentation on adding full-time security guards as opposed to part-timer per diem. This gives the guards an opportunity to receive benefits and steadier work hours, which will help with retention and recruitment. We're shown a breakdown that where, where each of the guards would be stationed across the district, the plan as kind of shown to us would increase the budget at about $900,000 a year, which was not included in that, that $17 million deficit. So that would, that would add a $900,000 on to that, that current deficit.
I'm sorry, did you say with benefits? That's part of it?
It would be benefits, and that's all part of the package. It's adding, I think, 12 full-time security officers, what was presented?
19, yeah.
19? Okay. And then if, though, we went with the weapons detection device, it was like another six on top of that or something? I thought it was 12 and then 18.
12 and 19, that was, that was 12 and then 18.
Without, yeah. I thought it's 12 without the weapons detection devices and 19 with.
It's more with, and it's still kind of a four-point...
It's definitely more with, and with, it was about maybe seven or eight officers additional for the weapons detection, all the additional needs. But Mr. Parker's plan kind of shifted to the, 19 became the ideal scenario in terms of full-time staffing for the district to meet all the needs in terms of, especially coverage for the elementaries and things like that that were discussed. That 19 number was a shift up from where they originally were, at 13.
Okay. So that'd be 19 or 26?
Exactly, yes.
Dr. Collins?
I, I appreciate that we're reaching out to our security experts to get some insights into their thoughts. I'm not sure the Audit and Finance Committee is the place for a recommendation for whether or not we should do that is the place to go. I think that maybe in terms of if we went that route, which one is most affordable or efficient might make sense. It seems like the recommendation of whether we should do that is not an Audit and Finance issue.
Sure. That's fair. I mean, yeah, I, I had asked for basically a recommendation on, on what kind of way to go, machine, et cetera.
I mean, the Safety Committee may be one space where that second, that first thing belongs, if, if not just to the whole board. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Ryder? No?
I was at the meeting.
Oh, okay. Well, if you have something to add.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be any individual committee, it would come back to the board...
It's always going to come back.
It's always going to come back to the whole board anyways, but, I mean, I agree, it, it, it doesn't belong in any committee to make that decision. I think it was just to get a recommendation on where we need to look at finance, the financial end of it. It's costly.
I mean, the reality is, the Safety Committee is not a board committee. I mean, we have board members that sit on it, it's not one of the three, it's not facilities, it's not Audit and Finance.
And they have done research, but I don't, I don't know that they'll make a recommendation. They'll, they'll just report their findings.
But I think this also, this touches not only the Audit and Finance, because of the financial pieces, this touches policy, because we're going to have policies around it. I mean, it touches facilities, because it's probably where the budget will come from, so it does touch the Safety Committee. So this touches, I think, getting the information from each of these committees and having this conversation, these committees, and then bringing it back to the whole, for the board to make the decision. So it's not, the board's not going to be able to make a decision, an informed decision, if we don't say, well, this is how much it's going to cost, right? And this is how many people we need for it, and this is the kind of, this is what the policy will be around the use of this, then, then there'll be a, an opportunity to say, okay, if this is how we're going to do it, oh, yes or no, kind of thing. So there's multiple, I think there's multiple committees.
I can appreciate what Dr. Collins said. I thought it was odd, but I also understand your, I think your vigor for having a system in place is just kind of showing through as you work in that committee and just put that out as a priority. So I, I mean, I understand it seems odd, but I also... it seems odd, but I also, just knowing your passion for these things, and it sounds like you want your recommendation to be brought to the board, not necessarily, whatever, to all the committees or whatever, something like that, so, but I do appreciate, I do appreciate the work, and two and a half hours is a long time.
And just, like, they were saying they didn't really wanna give a recommendation, and like, if they came back and said, we don't think that this is necessary, I would not move forward with any kind of resolution. I, again, I don't think we are the security experts, we pay people to do that and make those recommendations, and then we either take them or we don't, but it was just that in the beginning of that meeting, they said that they weren't planning on doing that, and that was like, that's where I kinda asked Dr. Pedalino to at least help them. I agree, it is probably something to the whole board, not Audit and Finance, although the recommendation of what system, depending on what costs, Audit and Finance.
Yeah, the cost is a piece of this puzzle.
It's a big piece.
But the existence is a bigger question that I think involves, as the final, everything, so I just wanted to be informed.
Okay, that concludes Audit and Finance and brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any trustees that would like an item pulled from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can we have a motion please to accept the consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, some of the sports staff for the spring sports are not on here, like head coaches for certain sports, we'll get those incoming, like, they're just not ready yet.
All in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Any opposed? We have, consent agenda's passed, we do have a few donations.
We do, we have five actually. The Board of Education of the Kingston City School District hereby accepts with grateful appreciation the following generous donations. To Ernest C. Meyer Elementary School from Kevin and Laura Healy, a donation of fifty dollars from Box Tops for Schools, a donation of seventy-one dollars and forty cents, and from Upstate Images, a donation of five hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. To M. Clifford Middle School for Box Tops, a donation of thirty-one dollars. From Hannaford Health Schools, a donation of three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and four cents. To Harry L. Edson Elementary School from Reading for Education, a donation of five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. To Bahar Preschool from Upstate Images, a donation of four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents. And finally, to Kingston City School District from Community Foundation of the Hudson Valley, a donation of a hundred, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. So thank you for those donations.
Is Upstate Images the picture company?
Yes.
I thought so, I thought maybe. Okay, that brings, that brings us to old business. We do have a old business item, our student rep for the board, and Dr. Pedalino has done a little bit of homework on that, I think.
I've done a little bit of homework, but I, Dr. Williams has done a lot of homework, so I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Williams to kind of answer any questions or kind of the outline of what she and Dr. Skorka talked about, who's the suggestion?
Sure. Thank you for talking today. Dr. Skorka and I, as well as with Dr. Pedalino and Mr. Reinhardt, had the opportunity to speak about the ex officio board member, and we also read through the NISBA Suggested Policy 2245, which talks about it becoming a law in July of two thousand and twenty-five. So, speaking with Dr. Skorka, and she also spoke with some of her faculty and staff members, what she'd like to propose is that we introduce this concept of having a student board member, starting this year, she would like to present to her faculty and staff at their faculty meeting on February the thirteenth, what the roles and responsibilities of the student member would be, and solicit nominations from the faculty and staff. She consulted with her BLT, her student government, PBIS committee, and she has a plethora of opportunities for students to lend their voice, and would love to give students who may not typically have the opportunity to engage in leadership opportunities, the opportunity to engage in this one, and feels that sometimes our student representatives are kind of consistent amongst different committees, and she wants to expand the opportunity. So one way is to have teachers nominate students who they see leadership skills in, but may not always have the opportunity to advance those leadership skills. Simultaneously, she also wants students to be able to advocate for their own opportunities to take advantage of this wonderful opportunity, and so she'll have a form that students can self-nominate themselves through, she'll advertise through the KHS, KTV, she will also put it on the bulletin boards and really work with the eleventh grade cohort if the board chooses to use the remainder of this year for the selection process, and then have the students start in July, because we proposed that it would be a twelfth grade student who has been in the school district for at least a year. If the board prefers to have a student start now, then we would request that a twelfth grader currently, you know, goes through the opportunity, but simultaneously, we look for the rising senior to start July first. So ultimately, she'd like to put this out February thirteenth, with the deadline being February twenty-eighth, for all of the submissions to come in, and then she'd like to meet with her staff members, that would be the cohort assistant principal, three additional staff members that she selected to go through the applications, she's asking, she wants to do a student body conversation, so students also understand what they either have been nominated for, or what they've selected to participate in, and then they will review all of the applications and invite students in for an interview, they would make sure that the application is complete, that the student has a letter of reference from one teacher, and has put in a letter of interest, and then from there, the committee would like to select two student representatives to present to the board. They would like for the students to have the opportunity to alternate, so they're not making, you know, the commitment every single night. The board policy also speaks to, if it's your will, the student to participate remotely on some nights, and/or to leave after they do their presentation, and so it does a really nice job of outlining what their roles and responsibilities are, what they can't do, the voting that, you know, can't happen with them, and that they can't attend the exec meetings, but they can serve as a conduit between the students and the board and share a student voice. And so there's a very lengthy proposal that will present a policy tomorrow alongside the sample policy.
Friday.
Friday? Well, in my mind. So tomorrow is Friday. Thank you, Dr. Biggs. So on Friday, and then get the blessings of policy and then present to the board, so that's essentially what Dr. Skorka would like to present.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Ryder?
Who is on the kinda like selection committee again that's gonna recommend the two students to?
So she would like to have herself, of course, so in the policy, there are six ways that NISBA says that the student can be selected, one of them is just principal nomination, but she doesn't wanna do that in isolation, so what she'd like to do is to have her eleventh grade cohort principal, because that would be the twelfth grade cohort principal next year, be a part of the selection process, as well as, she has an educator, I don't wanna name yet, because I don't know if she's spoken with this person yet, who supports student government and some other leadership opportunities within the school, so she'd like to elicit the support of that educator, and then two additional, I'm not sure yet how the remaining two will be chosen, but she wants to make sure that she has a wide representation of educators as well as students that have exhibited leadership skills, there are some other requirements like the code of conduct, you know, they've shown the capacity to abide by the rules and that kind of thing, but students who don't typically necessarily get chosen for opportunities like this, but have leadership ability.
Oh, I get that the selection part, I just, I guess, I would hope that there would at least be one student on that committee, when I first spoke about this in the past, I've been on the record that I think I support the most democratic selection, I understand Dr. Skorka's reasoning for wanting it to be a select committee and getting people who may not, like, not having it just kind of be popularity contest, or having people who may not have a chance, so I'm totally open to that, and we'll follow whatever policy says, I just wanna make sure that students have a voice in this, as well in the selection, so it would be great to have...
I think the other thing that I've found, having had ex officio student members, is one of their critical roles is to be certain they reach out to all of the constituents, so those who don't have a voice, and that's one of the jobs of the student rep that I've worked with.
Yeah, that's actually outlined in the draft that they would do.
And I applaud them for having two, because it's a lot, and we want certainly their commitment to their schoolwork and daily life to be their priority, but I've found it's great to have two, and, you know, having the process in the spring so that they can get oriented and be ready to run in July is, so I applaud that. The one thing I might think, just because our district is so large, is I know the law only requires a one-year requirement, but I won't be a policy, so maybe you wanna think about, since our district is so large, having a slightly longer requirement, like two years, just from experience, is just some thoughts, I'm not going to, but...
If you're as a senior?
No, two have been here.
No, two have been in the school.
Two years in the school district.
Mr. Liam?
I'm very excited about what they've planned, because that's a lot of work that's gone in between the last board meeting and this board meeting, and Dr. Skorka and you have taken into consideration all the things that we voiced at our last board meeting, and I look forward to the results of the work that you've done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
When you say that there's gonna be two and one of them alternate, is that, is the intention to be one at a time, or?
Yes, so they hope to get at least eight candidates out of the process, and after the interview, they hope to narrow it down to two with the goal of having them alternate months, so, you know, one would start, the board can excuse them for July and August for the summer months if you choose, but outside of that, they would come every other month.
Any other questions? Okay, it looks like we have a plan, so thank you very much.
Can I ask just one more question, because I was bothering Dr. Pedalino? So, is it that we would have one member and then the alternate would fill in when they can, or is it literally alternating back and forth every month, and is that actually allowed under the law? I know we can have an alternate, but like, can we dictate that like, okay, we have two meetings a month, so one hits one meeting and one hits the next, like, they alternate back and forth, or are we just saying the alternate's available when the primary person isn't?
So what she'd like to, what we'd like to propose, is that they alternate from the beginning, so we were just saying that July and August, you can choose to excuse the student ex officio board member because it's summer, you don't have to, but you can, and then other than that, we'd like for them to know ahead of time which months that they'd be dedicated, the policy doesn't seem to speak to whether or not that can't happen, it does say that you can have an alternate, but it doesn't specify how that alternate needs to be used.
Can we just confirm that before we go all the way to... Normally, when you have an alternate, that person's only really sitting in when the other person's not available, so...
Yeah, we can, we, sure, because here it says the optional language, an alternate ex officio board member will be, and then it asks you to choose the selection criteria, whether it's selected by the high school principal or elected by the student body, et cetera, but when we go through policy, I'll make sure that I present those three questions, one is whether or not the student can be a part of the, I'll present that to Rachel, a part of the nominating committee, and whether there might be a two-year requirement as opposed to the one-year, and whether or not the alternate needs to just be an alternate in case of emergency or...
As long as it's, I mean, I think this is great, and again, like, thank you for the work that you've done.
I think the concern with an alternate, that alternating every other month is perhaps a disconnect with the business of the board and how they're representing the student body, so I would wanna be sure that we know what we're doing on that one.
Yeah.
Mrs. Jordan?
I think that you could make it part of the responsibility that they need between, so that they can communicate that, you know, because I think that there are probably more benefits to them not having that stress of every meeting, and maybe it's one meeting a month or two, I don't know what's better, every month or every other meeting where they can, that's part of our responsibility is to tell them what their responsibility is.
Mr. Liam?
There's nothing, it stops both of them being at the board meeting, and one has the voice, and I would encourage, if we have an alternate, that they would both be welcome to be here, because any community member can be here.
I had concerns about having only one, that seems like a lot of pressure to put one student, like, and I know that the state says we have to do this, therefore we are doing it, but, you know, what I would hope to be getting out of this is to be like, student, what do you think? And I think it would be, alleviate some of that pressure if it was more like, well, what do you guys think, and not, so I don't understand, why we don't have like three, and that way we could even select them in different ways.
I think, well, they'll present you that policy, right?
Yes, it's on the agenda.
Okay, that brings us, any other old business?
I have one item for old business.
Mr. Spicer?
An indulgence in the beginning to clever all my thoughts down. I wish to discuss with the board an ongoing concern of ours. I believe all my fellow trustees have read the email shared between Dr. Pedalino and I, discussing the resignation of three African-American administrators over the past three years, and how this trend stands in opposition to our board's goals of increasing the diversity of our workforce and district leadership. In fact, if this trend continues over time, we could lose more of the wonderful diversity gains we've made over the past few years. I don't know that we have any African-American middle or high school principals or assistant principals left, so even though we are in fact experiencing some loss in workforce diversity gains, in the workforce diversity gains we've made over the past few years, there's actually no way our board can address this concern immediately or directly. If any board member wanted to address this, the way school boards deal with this longstanding, with longstanding complex issues is through committee hearings, data review, follow-up board committee meetings, follow-up board committee recommendations to the superintendent for corrective action, but we don't have a board-level diversity, equity, and inclusion committee where this could happen. For three years now, we have been discussing the need for ongoing oversight, data review, and programmatic review of the success and progress of our DEI recruitment and retention programs that we need to prevent the loss we're seeing. I have publicly discussed with the board that without direct and targeted action, attention to this issue, we could lose the gains we've made. It's hard to fix a problem without... It's hard to fix a problem without ongoing direct monitoring. And the only way school boards devote themselves the time and resources to study serious issues like district finance, effectiveness of our educational programs and progress, school policy or efforts to improve our facilities, and also to recruit and maintain a diversified workforce, it's not in public meetings like this, it's in committees. Dr. Padalino has promised us a report sharing with us the root causes of these recent diversity resignations and the effectiveness of our current retention practices. But my fellow trustees, what will you do with this report after that? You have no committee dedicated to review it or engage in any follow-up action to address any concerns the report might bring to light. When we were moving in the positive and making gains, I asked us to adopt our own DEI committee charter, passing it around again now. Now that we're suffering diversity losses, I am hoping at least one of my fellow trustees would consider providing a second to a motion I'll be making to adopt the charter we wrote two years ago and allow us to provide our district the review and oversight that could save the gains we've made thus far. To make this clear, fellow trustees, in order for us to allow the progress of any district initiative to die, you don't have to oppose it, all you have to do is ignore it. And paneling your own DEI committee is your way of scrupulously monitoring, continually reviewing programs, evaluating the success or ineffectiveness of our programs and help us move toward our goals. I also share with you that the loss of three African-American administrators in three years is the definition of diversity retention initiatives that need review. We can do something and we should do something. The adoption of our own DEI charter is actually something. I know we all care about this deeply. This charter transforms our deep concern into action and agency. And before I put forth my motion to finally adopt our own diversity, equity, inclusion committee charter, I want to wish everyone a sincere and enlightening Black History Month. And I do make the motion to adopt our own DEI charter. And that motion needs a second.
I'm sorry, a DEI committee charter?
This charter that you're having.
Okay, I was just making.
So I have questions.
It has to be seconded, so you get seconded for discussion.
You can second and then we can discuss it.
Second.
It's been seconded.
For discussion.
You say ours, but this has.
It was written before you were here, but we wrote it.
Okay.
If I recall the last time this was brought up, what I recall from the discussion, and I was just on the board, is we had had a presentation by one of our administrators about the DEI initiative. And what I heard her support at the time was that we should be certain that because we all care very deeply about this, we should be certain that these things are embedded in everything we do versus have a separate standing committee. And so every committee was going to be charged with looking at that. So that was what I recall from the discussion we had back when I first joined the board in, I don't know if it was June or July, I think you were here at the time. So, and we were, and we were supporting, what I heard was a recommendation of one of our administrators, and I apologize that I won't get.
Dr. Salini.
Yes, but I won't get the title right.
If I could, I mean, that was because there was a transition from moving away from the Equity Action Committee, which was again, not a board-driven committee, but was like the safety committee, a board that had a board member liaisons. And at the time, I was close to supporting, you know, the idea of a Board of Education Committee. And then I was told that it was, we were going to move it to basically teaching and learning and also have it kind of be a part of every committee. I'll just say the two committees, one that I chair, so some of the fault blames applies on me, but I don't think we've done any action in looking at a lens of DEI and audit and finance, and I don't think we have in, in facilities. And so, you know, I would probably not support this resolution tonight because I am not supportive of resolutions that we don't get heads up on and time to really sit and think about. I would be in favor of probably tabling this and bringing up another time in the near future, maybe after Dr. Padalino presents in, on March 5th. But to just, like, the reason it wasn't supported last time is because it was done this way again, which was like, no, this wasn't provided to us ahead of time and now we're just supposed to vote on it, so.
I review almost everything you just said, only because even the last time it was presented, it was sent to all of you via email, you all had it ahead of time. I don't believe in surprises. And now this resolution is two years old. There isn't anybody sitting here who can say, sitting here, except maybe Anthony, I don't know, I've never seen this before. It's two years old, it wasn't even written by me, it was written by Robin Jacobowitz.
Last year.
That's correct.
Not two years.
Not two years.
It's less than a year old.
Yeah.
When did Robin leave the booth?
Last year.
In July.
Okay, so then, so then, so are you saying this is the first time you've seen this?
I'm not saying it's the first time I've seen it, but I haven't seen it in 10 months. And so to then not have it be in the library that I can take a look at again and review again, that I have questions, but I don't even have them articulated because I haven't read it in a while.
I agree with what Mark said, it's not that it's new, and I know that Robin, and you worked on this, I do know that that happened, but again, I don't, just getting another coffee tonight and asking for this tonight is kind of hard to support. Not that I would, like, same thing as Mark, not that I wouldn't support it, but just if I had a little bit more time to think about it. And I know it sounds like it's been forever, but, and it looks like it's well-written and everything, I would just like time to just read it and ponder it before making a decision. That's, that's just my own feeling. And I, as always, appreciate your passion for, for this, for making sure things are happening to try and.
And it's fair, and there's a motion on the table to, to table it, to give everybody another chance.
I made that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion to table it.
I'll second it.
But I also. So.
Discussion.
On the table.
On the table.
Oh, only on the table.
The table motion is on the table. We can second, so I think we have to vote.
Does the timing of the table count? Does the?
That's part of the.
Okay. Because it seems that the points you bring up are really important, that, what's happening with administrators. I also think it's not the whole story and we might get more of the story on March 5th. And so might I propose that we at least table it until March 5th, if not the following board meeting to then think about that. A specific date, I guess, either March 5th or the next one.
You can amend my table motion.
Doesn't it just, a motion at any upcoming meeting could untable it? I mean, that's, that's Robert's rules. Like, I don't, I, you know, I've allowed kind of the weapons detection systems to be tabled in, in forever because I haven't brought it back, but Stephen can make a motion at the next meeting to untable it, and if there's support for it, it would be untabled.
True, but I, I just appreciate the comments that you both made and I appreciate what Stephen's concerns are. But I think that it would be important, especially since we have a new person in this position who has a different lens, which is always helpful to everybody. So I think that I'm not so concerned about positions that may, people who may have left cannot be all put in one category as to why they left. And so I think it's really important that we look at where we are now, just as you said, so we can be critical about our progress in the area of all diversity.
Do you actually know what we're doing right now? We're having a DEI meeting in public. This is what the DEI committee does.
Well, this is public.
It's public.
All, all I'm saying is, your question about the complications of resignations is true. What, what brings them all under the umbrella of DEI is not just that the people we're talking about may be people of color, maybe, maybe. But the issue is, how effective are our retention policies? How deep did we go back into where these people were having challenges before they resigned? That's what the DEI committee does. And, and then they look at all that evidence and they decide, something may not be working well.
Well, first of all, I don't know that the board is privy to that. That's not legal. Some of what you're suggesting may not be legal, I, I'm not an expert on this, but.
That's administrative.
Wait, wait, wait.
Excuse me, can I make my?
We're having a conversation we can't have because the only discussion that's supposed to be happening right now is on tabling the motion.
I mean, we could.
And we're having major conversations about.
And resend the motion, we could go back into motion.
Okay, I'll, we'll be soon.
And I'm sorry, it's my fault, we had fallen into a DEI meeting, I just wanted us to know it. So that, that was my fault. So there is a motion to table, has it been seconded?
Okay. There was a motion to table, but then we rescinded the motion to table so that you could continue that conversation.
I make a motion to table.
All in favor of tabling this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So this proposal has been tabled.
I'd like to make a motion to create a working group to create a different, a better, not this for DEI. So, is that, does that make sense?
I didn't hear what you said.
I think we should, I definitely think we should do this, but not as written, like, can we get?
Well, can you?
Can you give recommendations?
To Stephen?
I mean, it's just like a critical inquiry kind of a thing, and I think that's what we're all kind of saying, that we want time to like, look at the parts of it that we want to, I mean, we want to use most of it, but like, how robust can you make it?
And this is the language that came from the New York State School Boards Association.
Yeah, most of it's fine, but like.
And it had a working group, I mean, in fairness, before you were here, but like, it did have a working group with Dr. Jacobowitz and Mr. Spicer, and, and so there, there was a working group that already kind of formed and had this. I think it's fair, if you want to make recommendations, I don't think I would support adding another working group to.
It's also fair, this is your committee, this is your committee. It's also fair, once you adopt this, to go back and rework it all. How many meetings do you want to have a year? Exactly what do you want to do? It's your committee. You could do whatever you want. Mr. Fitzpatrick, inside of this committee, say, I don't think we should be doing this or that or that or this, that's.
Well, because all that would be in the charter.
Charter's not.
So I, I think we're, because we had a motion, I didn't hear a second.
I thought we already voted on it.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What motion now?
I want to make a motion to.
We rework the committee and the charter. That's the motion.
A working group for the charter.
That's the motion, but we don't have a second, any second. So we can't act on that motion.
Mrs. Jordan.
May I suggest that, I think that you have fresh eyes, Mr. Fitzpatrick, on this, and I, I'm sure that Mr. Spicer would be open to any feedback that you have, that maybe you could share with the whole board, and then we can, when we meet on March 4th and learn what the updates are, it seems then it would be a more productive conversation, just for me. But I'm sure that you're open to any suggestions that Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Can I get a consensus of the board then? Because Mr. Rydick's point is genuine and right and real, that everybody should have fresh eyes on it before we take a vote on something. Would everybody, would anybody mind if by our next board meeting, I did bring it up again, or should, or do we need more time than that? Yes.
I, I want the current information so that I can judge whether or not it's useful or not, personally. That's what I would like. I would like it to be after the presentation of our new DEI director.
March.
No, retention.
March 5th. Oh, February?
March.
March 5th, so waiting.
Right, that's the, that's why I mentioned that date, because we have that on our calendar.
Oh, I understand, okay.
That's the report.
Okay, my brain said February 5th, okay, and this is February 5th.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, okay, okay.
So that's, that's my rationalization.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to any other old business? Moving on to new business.
I wanted to talk about creating a committee, like, we no longer have the parent, parent council committee. I wanted to talk about doing that again in some capacity, but maybe hopefully as a board committee.
Can we have parent engagement? I sit on something and I realize that we haven't called it this year. What is it?
Parent group?
Parent group.
Yeah, we, we have had a parent group, we haven't met.
We haven't met this year?
No. And I'm going to say it again, and if the board wants to do it, please do. I'm not going to be chairing a group that will not respect simple courtesy, simple structure, simple rules of order, I'm not going to sit on it. So if the board wants to do that and you would like to do that, I will not do that. And that's what, that's what this became. So we were very, I thought, equitable and conscientious of our district as a whole, invited a, invited a PTO president and vice president from each building to be part of that group, and it wasn't, that was not respected by members of the group. And what it turned out to be was about 10 members from one school building and all the other members decided not to do it anymore because they were basically marginalized in that process. That's when I stopped doing it. I don't think it's, I think it's valuable, we, we had done it for 11 of my 13 years as superintendent, but I will not do that. When I send out team, you know, invites to people and it's shared with hundreds of people who then, again, show up into a meeting, there's supposed to be equal opportunities for every building, and turns into not that at all, I won't do it. People cannot respect simple order, simple, you know, just, just courtesy and, and being polite. So I, I understand the board would want to do that, that's completely within your realm. If you want to direct me to do it, I'll do it, but it's going to be very short-lived if people can't just operate in a simple manner.
It just sounds like it needs a facilitator or a mediator or an arbiter, I don't know.
Mrs. Jordan.
I will say that we, we had a parent, longstanding parent committee that was dissolved because of bad behavior.
I know.
And then we have a committee that, before COVID, that Dr. Padalino met with every month, and it was very well attended by, there was a representative. month, and it was very well attended by, there was a representative from.
We had two separate committees at that time. One time I had a group of people from the community that were both parents as well as community-based partners, that I met with, and they were kind of our COVID kind of communication team. And then I did have the group that I was saying before, I mean.
No, but before.
Before that.
We did them in person.
We did those.
For years. And Dr. Padalino would answer questions, they were very informative, and parents asked good questions, and we, I think we went from school to school, so everybody could host. And I don't know if you'd be willing to do an in-person, go back to that.
The in-person then just gets crashed by 30 or 40 other people.
Well, like any other open meeting, though, they're, they can watch.
It does not work that way.
Well, then I don't blame you for it.
It's not as, it's not as early as you, you all keep it here, I'm sorry to say, but I've had both, I've had both experiences.
Well, that's unfortunate.
And we've had that experience in our building leadership teams, our district leadership teams, you know, our shared decision-making team, all those, we've had that, we've had that, this has been our experience for the last few years around almost every open meeting we have, except for board meetings.
Well, that's not reasonable.
No, it's not. I, so I.
Mr. Fitz.
I go to some of these meetings, and they, some of them really need the support. I think that.
You mean some of the people who show up who aren't on the committee and want to speak anyway, and that's who needs the support, or the committee?
No, the, the, the groups, like the PTOs, the ones that have nothing to do with the schools that are related to the people that you're possibly referring to.
Mr. Reiner.
I didn't realize we weren't going to do parent engagement, like, I mean, on the website, it says I'm on a parent engagement committee. If we're not going to have a parent engagement committee, then I'd like to have that removed from, like, my website, because I don't, I don't want to be, seem to be on something that doesn't exist, and then be like, well, what's happening with parent engagement? It says that you're on this committee. And so my request would be that if we're not going to be and do that, that I get removed from that. But I mean, I also think that there's a way that we can probably figure it out.
What if you went to the schools, or a group of us went to each school, and didn't invite any other school? So you want to hear from the parents at Graves, or you want to hear from the parents at Crosby? Now you have an opportunity to hear the voices from each building, one at a time. I know it's time-consuming, and it would be work, but might be just something to consider.
I just think, having had parent councils that function, and again, it was with a district that was fairly large spread, the beauty of it was that the PTOs could exchange ideas and get it from each other. And that was the beauty, when they worked effectively. And if we, if we do that, we can hear certainly, you know, issues that are important issues, but at one building, but we lose the benefit for those other organizations, because that's what I observe being valuable for my parent councils.
I think it depends on what the objectives are, so like, if Anthony's saying that people feel like they need support at different places, I mean, I think it's something we should probably think about. I don't think we're going to solve it tonight, but I think it's valuable, I think it's valuable. And I think like Mark said, we really know that we weren't kind of doing that, we have no meetings or anything like that, but I think it's a meaningful point that you draw up. And it might be, like, what are, I forgot about the charter, like, but what are the objectives of it? Because they can't digress into like, something that's absolutely not functioning at all. So like, what is the function of it? Or what are we looking to get out of it, or give, you know, like, what are the objectives? Which I think you know a lot of them, because I think they're just for that gang who is invested in that kind of thing. Not that I'm not invested, but I'm just saying, as a parent in the district, so I appreciate that, so I don't know if there's much at the table.
I'm sorry. Dr. Collins, and then Mr. Reiner.
My understanding is that the objective was a part to give twofold, right? To give parents from each school an opportunity to interact with administrators and get direct communication, questions answered, or questions asked and questions answered in ways that they otherwise don't have, and then also to exchange ideas. And so I do believe it's an important form for parents that we haven't had, for whatever reason, and so maybe we won't solve it tonight, but I do think we need to have it on our radar to address relatively soon, because though the parents can write us letters, they can write administration letters, the ability to have a conversation, I think, is irreplaceable. And I think the amount of information and reassurance that is provided by administrators when those conversations happen is also really valuable for our school communities and the parents. So I'm not sure what form it should take, but I do think we need to think really carefully about this. It is a place where historically, it's been productive. So there must, there's got to be a way in which we can go forward and still have parents, PTOs in particular, being able to talk to our district administrators.
And I don't want you to feel like we're not, like, that we're not supporting you, because that's like, that's not where we're going, so like, it would be nice to find a way to be supportive of you and the board and the whole concept, not the way it's happened.
Exactly what.
I don't think that's fair, yeah.
Exactly what Dr. Collins just explained, you know, just discussed, was what we used to do.
Yeah.
So either we have a portion of it, where there would be opportunities to talk about whatever the issues are already in school for them to bring to us, but also there was an opportunity to talk about other things. We're trying to raise money for a playground, we're trying to, you know, what do people do? Or even sometimes it's, this is the problem we're having, is anybody else having that problem, those parents? So, I mean, it was, it was a, it was a helpful and reasonable dialogue that was, again, good for about 11 years.
I don't know how to read.
Siri was on that.
Mr. Reiner.
I think whether it's, and I think it's unintentionally, but I do think unintentionally, as a board, in my time here, we've done more and more to isolate ourselves from, away from the public by making a decision to end the copy, you know, functions, and then, and again, unintentionally, but like, I think we need to get back to kind of having functions where we are, are out there listening to parents more, again, as Dr. Collins said, they can write us letters, they can come and speak for two minutes on certain topics at a board meeting, but we're not engaging with them in a way that I think we should be, so whether it's starting this back up.
And finding, finding the medium is the real issue, because like, coffee and conversations, like, they were okay, but like, I don't know whether they were well-attended, so it's just trying to find the form that really works, which I think is difficult for us.
Yeah, I was thinking that the reason why I think this parent group is so valuable is that at those coffee and conversations, we quickly find out that either we are, we don't have the answers, or we turn to the administration to answer them, because they're so much more effectively answered by Dr. Padalino. So I think that's one of the challenges we have as a board, when we really struggle to find the right mechanism for outreach and listening. In this case, for the parent group, I think that the valuable, the value comes in that they are getting an answer directly from the person that is steering the ship. And so I think that that is finding rules of engagement that are productive, and so that no one's attacked in that scenario, I think is really crucial. And I, I don't have the quick answer, but I do think that we, that line of communication is an important one, and I agree, I think we're sort of breaking that down, is, just shutting down isn't going to solve the problem long-term.
Mr. Lamb and Mrs. Jordan.
My wife was part of that committee also, and really enjoyed it. What I can say is, before that committee was formed, we used to rotate buildings for the board meetings, and the board meeting was at Anna Devine, and then the next month, there was one at. And those PTOs had a beginning period of the board meeting, that they could talk about their experiences and what was happening. If we could do that and, and stream it, everybody would be, all the other schools would be hearing it, and you wouldn't be isolating and attacking building to building as much. So that would be one way around it.
Mrs. Jordan.
Yeah, I think technology in its effort to expand has restricted us, but I also feel as a board member and as a community member, who participated for many years on the parent discussion group, it is unconscionable, and I will not support the idea that people can come and be disrespectful because people don't get their way, or feel that the only answer is the answer that they want to hear. And I cannot support any meeting where people are disrespectful. I have walked out of meetings with administrators in my former role when people were disrespectful. And I'm, whatever meetings we have as a district, I think should end as soon as somebody crosses a line when they are not respecting the process. And unfortunately, when I look around at my administrative team, they're all really nice people, and they do everything they can to try to welcome people in and work with people, and there have been, sometimes even at this podium, when people were not telling the full truth, and were angry because they didn't get the answer that they wanted. And that is not, that is not acceptable ever, and for some reason, the whole country thinks it's okay now, and it's not okay. And so I fully support a parent group with the elected president from every PTO, or if they can attend their chosen all group, to come, but I'm not in favor of everything being a free-for-all, so that people who have their own agenda can come and just make people uncomfortable. That's not acceptable. And that's not the role of the board, and it's certainly not the role of the administration. So I'm fully in favor of resurrecting the in-person meetings with the president of the PTO and other people, you know, if they want to sit, but if they can't sit quietly, they should be escorted out. And I'm sorry, but that's not ideal.
I think, I think we all agree that this conversation needs to continue, but I think we can also agree it's not going to be used out tonight. So we can put that on future agendas. So, any other new business?
Uh, yes. Um, so everyone talks about the electric transition of buses, but I've noticed that we have a rather large fleet of vehicles. I wanted to begin talking about transitioning all of them to zero emission vehicles, or looking.
You know we don't have our own buses.
But we, I mean, like, just trucks that drive the food around.
So you're talking about trucks, like maintenance?
Oh, yeah, like those white trucks that you see.
And the other cars?
Oh, you don't mean food boxes?
No.
No, 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 no.
Transitioning the fleet. We only have.
That's an interesting idea.
Is that a facilities conversation?
Yeah.
That's where you would get the most help.
Any vehicles we have that don't transport, well, we don't have any vehicles to transport students, are either at the warehouse, or I think we have, will be four, four cars? What do we have?
Three here, and one back.
Yeah, so we have the minivan and the three little cars, right? And the rest are either food service or maintenance. So I don't know where that conversation would really take place, but maybe, maybe facilities.
I think you would get the most help there.
I'm happy to have the conversation on it and finance, I do think it would work, you know, I think it could be also a policy decision, like, I've seen places do it, where they do a passive policy on a, normally a transition period for a zero emission fleet, you know, a certain percentage over a certain amount of time.
Or it could even be as, as replacement as we want, rather than scheduling it if we don't need to spend money, you know, but.
You said, sorry, clarification, so we have like, four cars, and then in terms of other trucks or?
Maintenance.
No, maintenance vehicles.
Oh, no, that's what I'm saying, four cars, then we have our maintenance, the rest are at the warehouse, the maintenance trucks and the food service trucks, I was just, like, cars, passenger vehicles, we have four. But then we have, yeah, then we have all of our maintenance trucks and our food service trucks.
Those are kind of DBW, they're driving the Ford Lightnings, they're driving the means, they have these vehicles that, that are EVs and HV, you know.
So basically, you know, things like, how many of these do we have, and how the best way to start figuring that out would be, is what I was hoping for?
Well, I can certainly put it on the agenda for facilities, and Dr. Collins?
I was just going to make the general comment, that it's consistent with one of our board goals around prioritizing climate change in the conversation, so it seems to me that if we can start prioritizing it within our relevant committees, then we can think about the ways in which that might result in board action. But, so, I just, I think it's a fair thing for us to think about, especially starting small with our own fleet, maybe that's a place where we look at the cost, we look at the policy around it.
And when it's time to replace a vehicle?
That's right.
Perhaps that would be given consideration, rather than making, I don't think our budget's going to allow it.
Ford Lightnings forever.
Any other new business?
I guess just Herb and I are going up to Albany next, next week? Next week? I had solicited some demands of others that would be helpful, I have my own demands, and I assume Nisba gives, tells us what they want, but I was wondering if anyone had anything they wanted.
I think one of the things that Ms. Ford is going to assist us with on Monday is language for what we can say around foundation aid, because we're having, our meeting was shifted to Monday, and she's going to join us with some recommendations on that, that's the one.
I kind of assume that would be in line with whatever Nisba has.
I can mail you before then, again, it's like, kind of like Mr. Spicer's thing, it's like, I normally appreciate if things can get on the agenda under new business or old business, so I have time to think about it, and not just off the cuff, try to get ideas.
And you may want to refer to the, the listing that the Ulster County School Boards Association developed. Some of those ideas, I think, would be supported. I know I support them, but you might want to refer to that, because you went to that meeting.
Oh, yeah, I looked, I know what they want.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that brings us to.
Oh, but, and then one more thing, well, all right, fine, one more thing. The letters from students that was in the board library.
So I was going to make this under board announcements. I am willing, and I think it's appropriate, that I send a letter of acknowledgement to the teachers, that the board has received the letters, and we are in the process of reading those letters and preparing a format for how we will respond, whether we. and preparing a format for how we will respond, whether we each write a letter to students. I just want the board to be united on how we respond to that, and Dr. Pedalino, I don't know if you have any advice, but if that's agreeable to everyone, I'll, I'll acknowledge that we receive them to the teachers, and let them know that we will work on how we're going to communicate to the students.
Can we read them all?
They're in your library?
Some of, well, yeah, I know, but for everybody? Some of them?
I'm not in favor.
You don't want to hear from, okay?
Well, everybody can read them on their own.
I think he means for the public.
Yeah, for the public.
I don't know if they're for public consumption.
I don't think they are.
They were addressed to us, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think it's appropriate that they be revealed, if they wanted them to go to the public, they could send it to the paper, I suppose.
Or come to public.
A public to come, yeah, I, I don't think that that's appropriate. Any other announcements?
Are we, are we there yet?
Oh.
I have one, but.
Don't worry, yes.
It's a public comment, so we have.
Are we, are we still there yet?
Go ahead.
So, are we skipping public comment?
Is there anybody out there that would like to adjust the board? Okay, so we're past public comment, now you have a board member now.
All right, so, last year, a bunch of board members attended, in some aspect or another, attended the So Join or Truth Life Walk, which is, in some walked it, some went and tabled at the end. The walk is, it's an annual thing, so again, it's, it's February 15th this year, which is a Saturday. I will be attending the walk, it would be great if anybody wanted to join and, and walk with me, or just be involved in some way, like was done last year. I'm sure we could get a hold of the sponsors, but it would, you know, there was an opportunity to talk at the beginning, and, and people spoke in a sofas, and so that would be an opportunity for people to join, even if they couldn't, didn't want to do the full walk. There's also the opportunity to walk, and then there's some events. Wanted to make sure. So, it's 11 to 4, so 11 a.m. And typically, they've ran buses out of Deets, you know, well, that's not, that'd be the city, but I was just thinking Deets, but. Yeah, typically, they have buses there. But, if, if you're not going to catch a bus at, at Deets, then I think you'd want to be at the sofas down hall by 11.
Any other announcements? So, that brings us to a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.